All right, welcome everybody. A call to order the city council regular meeting agenda for Monday, December the 11th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. If you would all rise and as we are led as in our invocation by Councilmember Hernandez, also followed by the two pledges by Councilmember Kate.
All right, please join me in a quick prayer to get us started. Dear Heavenly Father, it's a wonderful day. I always have at least one complaint, but I say, you know, it's a little bit cold, but that's all right. You always make up for it in other ways. You give us other great things and bestow blessings upon us day after day after day. And for that, I'm very thankful. And just lead us, be with us tonight and help us make great decisions. And also, please, I wanted to say, place your hand on Members Cam, Car and Barry. This is our last meeting tonight. And just make them feel as though their, their service to the city was, was greatly appreciated. And I know that I enjoyed serving with them. And thank you for giving me the pleasure to serve alongside them, to learn alongside them. And let them go on to do great things with whatever lies ahead. And we know that it's all to serve you. And may your will be done to make Pearland a greater community for now and forever. And these things we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
There we go. All right. Thank you for that. Welcome, everybody, to as we are winding down 2023. So we have one more meeting, official meeting in a week, and we'll be winding down the council business for the year and looking forward to 2024. As we move forward in our agenda, roll call and certification of quorum. Madam Secretary, I'll certify, we have a full quorum present as all members of the council are accounted for and in the chambers and participating. With that, we turn to citizens comments. I believe we have one citizen that wants to speak under general comments. And there's no, no comments signed up for the different action items. So Mayor Proton, would you present the speaker, please?
Yes, Mayor. We'll call up Kathy Bonk if you'd make your way to the podium. We'll give you three minutes to speak. Okay. When, when you get up there, state your name and address, and they'll, they'll start rolling the three minutes for you. Thank you for coming out this evening.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Bonk. I live at 2325 Parkview Drive. I live across the street from the entrance of Mary's Creek Trail and the park. As you can see from all these pictures, it's really, really looking really bad. The picnic tables at the park are rusted. Kids sit at them. They're really dangerous. The trail is dug up. There are trees that are dead, branches that fall on the trail. It missed some people. There is orange netting on the trail that has been there since we moved in a year and a half ago that is falling apart. And it, it just needs to be looked at. My phone number, my husband's phone number, our address is in there. We're retired. Have somebody come and walk the trail with us. It just needs to be looked at. I really thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you for those. And thank you for these pictures. Just only question I have, not to dialogue, but when were these pictures taken? Just so for kind of, perfect. Thank you. That's all I needed. Okay. Thank you for that. And thank you for coming down and thank you for your comments tonight. We'll take that under advisement. I know our parks folks are here as well, so we will hand it over to the right folks to see if we can't get some of it addressed. Pictures are pretty telling. So with that, we'll move to the consent agenda. I have been presented with items F, G, and J to be removed, if that's correct. With that, Mr. Carbon, if you would present consent agenda items A through J with the exception of F, G, and J.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, approval of consent agenda items A through J with the exception of F, G, and J. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Madam Secretary, we'll call for that vote.
Member Carbon.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Coza.
Aye.
Member Camp Car.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Member Patel.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, moving forward to new business item number one. Mr. Camp Car, would you present that? And then after presenting it, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about our names that we're putting forward on that. Thank you.
Sir, consideration possible action resolution R 2023-286. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Real quick, just by way of oriented everybody to, to this. We actually get to have X number of votes that go towards people who sit on the board at the appraisal district. This is a governance board. This isn't the actual board or appraisal review board that actually rules on various appraisals. This is a governance board that runs the business activity of the Missouri County Appraisal District. We also have votes that go towards Harris County as well as Fort Bend County appraisal districts. And so we asked for this to be pushed out a couple of weeks because we've had, quite frankly, we had kind of last minute. We had some people pull out and pull in as far as consideration for that. And so we wanted to make sure that, that our votes were casting counted, counted the most that we could. So, so counsel, giving the update, I'm not sure if update came out to you earlier today. But in question, you know, we had submitted our name for George Sanders. In addition to that, we have another gentleman in our community, Patrick O'Day, that is under consideration as well. So it looks as though right now, and my recommendation to everyone is the school district is going to cast its votes towards George Sanders 100%. They have 631 votes, I think it is, and our 300 and whatever it is, 320, 323, whatever that number is. I'm going to suggest that we give those to Patrick O'Day. Both gentlemen would end up being on the appraisal district that would give to very good folks from Pearland on the appraisal district board. In addition to that, you have Tommy King from Alvin and Alvin ISD area. You'd have three solid people from the north end of the county serving. So my recommendation is to go in that direction. And I'll open it up for any questions or comments this time.
I'd make a motion to move our votes to Patrick O'Day.
So an amending motion to move our votes to Mr. O'Day.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All right. Any other questions, comments on that? And Darren, if I'm understanding, we need to vote on that amendment because we're adding it and then we'll vote on it together. Madam Secretary, we're going to vote on the amendment to give our 300 plus votes to Mr. O'Day.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Member Patel.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Coza.
Aye.
Member Carbon.
Aye.
Member Camp Car.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, so we have an amended, an amended motion on the table now. We'll come back around and vote on that amended motion. Madam Secretary?
Mayor Proton Coza.
Aye.
Member Carbon.
Aye.
Member Camp Car.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Member Patel.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, thank you for that. Moving to new business item number two, Mr. Coza, would you present that, please?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution number R 2023-301. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. This item is for the award of a construction contract for the Westminster subdivision waterline replacement project. Earlier today in our workshop on the CIP, we talked a lot about our waterline replacement program, and this is one of those. So this replaces 1.61 miles of transite waterline. We'll be putting in HDP, HDPE pipe in this instance. It also includes upsizing the smaller diameter pipes, which we no longer implement or put in subdivisions. Some of the two and four inch lines with a minimum of our current standard of six inch lines. So long term, this reduces our maintenance. It also improves fire flows if we ever have an incident in there. It's about an eight month construction schedule. We received nine bids and we recommend award to the lowest responsible bidder. Lopez Utility Construction in the amount of $982,275. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Any questions, comments on that? Nine bids tells me the market's getting where it needs to be. Slowing down a little bit and people are getting hungry. So that's good to hear. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Proton Coza.
Aye.
Member Carbon.
Aye.
Member Camp Car.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Member Patel.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, thank you for that. Moving to new business item number three, Mr. Hernandez, would you present that?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration, possible action resolution number R 2023-300. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is for the award of a construction contract to rehab the Sunrise Lakes lift station. So again, something we talked about in our workshop this afternoon is that we've got a program to rehab our lift stations that we have throughout the city, 68 of those wastewater lift stations. This one in our 2019 assessment was determined to have a very high, very high critical rating and a poor condition rating. So a very important one to get on our rehab schedule. As part of the ongoing series where we address these conditions and bring our lift stations up to current standards. It's the schedule for this project is 240 days to final completion. This one, a little, we don't see as many contractors in this arena like we do waterline. So on this one, we only received two bids, but we do recommend award to the, to the low bidder, Niri Construction in the amount of $773,020. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you for that. With that, open up for questions, comments from council. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Member Patel.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Coza.
Aye.
Member Carbon.
Aye.
Member Camp Car.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, with that, we will move forward in our agenda, which is actually moving us back to the consent agenda, those items that were removed. So Ms. Cade, if you would present item F. And Darren, is it okay if we go ahead and put F and G on the table and discuss because they're kind of related? And then we'll vote separately. Okay. Ms. Cade, if you'll present items F and G.
Okay. Consideration and possible action resolution number R 2023-299 and resolution number R 2023-298. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Both of these items are interlocal agreements with the Houston Galveston Area Council. The first item is for a Pearland mobility study and the second one is for a FM 518 corridor study. So Houston Galveston Area Council, our regional council governments, our regional planning partner, they do lots of planning studies and are able to access federal funding to do those. So oftentimes when we have these type of needs, we partner with HGAC to do these studies. Both of these, we're paying about 10% of the studies and, and we'll see a lot of benefit out of those. So I'll go into the, the first one is the mobility study. So what this will actually do, it, it's going to provide us an update to our thoroughfare plan and provide recommendations on future projects in the short term, midterm and long term. And these could be intersection improvements. They could be street widensings. They could be other mobility or safety improvements on our roadway network. The last mobility plan we did was in 2014, which has been used extensively since then to guide our intersection improvements and roadway priorities in our capital improvement program. So this will actually update everything based on current conditions today and make recommendations based on that. So our contribution here is $50,000 on about a $450,000 study. And, you know, if you, if we take a look back at our 2014 study, we probably spent close to that amount of dollars. And we actually paid for 100% of this one. So something we need to update periodically. It's been, you know, well over eight, nine years. And so time to do that, help guide our future transportation projects and, and work with our HGAC partners to, to pay for the bulk of that. And then on the second item, this is a corridor study for FM 518. The limits are from McLean to FM 2351 in Friendswood. So as everyone's aware, the, the 518 has already been slated for widening between 288 and McLean. And this is taking a look at east of there over to Friendswood, which in our mobility plans and our mobility models or transportation models show, we'll see as much or more actually traffic and growth in that, that segment towards Friendswood of 518 than, than we will really west of McLean. So what it will look at is safety improvements, access management improvements, multimodal mobility as well as congestion. Additionally, what this does, and I think most importantly for us, is it's going to take a look at the one-way pair concept between McLean and Berry Rose using Walnut and 518 for that, that one-way pair concept. And knowing that we want to take a look at that concept when we get into our Old Town study that we're conducting with our community development folks and, and Pearland Economic Development Corporation. This will be a big piece of informing that Old Town plan that we want to look at of whether or not this is, will work, whether it's recommended, whether it's got public acceptance. So, you know, this will include a public input meeting so we can, that concept can be talked about in the public to get public feedback on that before we would move forward with anything. So again, our cost share in this one's about 10% again. So our cost of, of share of this study is about $60,000. So with that, Mayor, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Camp Car. I think you pulled both of them.
Yes, sir.
Talk about both of them.
So Trent, just to clarify this, so this study will get done, it's going to take, I think, 18 months from what the agenda says. And they will analyze traffic patterns and then make recommendations for future projects based on these studies.
Yes, sir.
So the predicate for expansions of 518, the one pair concept, obviously there's different studies in here. Those will be based out of this, whatever is programmed in the study or recommended. This will be the predicate to move forward on, let's call it engineering and pricing and different things of that nature.
Yes, that would, that would proceed moving forward with any design or anything else.
Next question, is Pearland Chamber opine on this? The last expansion, they, they oppose that. Have they opined their willingness to move forward in that direction?
I think, you know, if we're, we're talking about the one-way pair concept, I mean, we've had
Just talking generally on these two.
Generally, so on the 518 corridor study, I don't know that they've opined on that particular segment of it. There will be extensive, you know, public input so that we can, we can gather that information. We can obviously, you know, the chamber will be part of these discussions as we move forward as well as the businesses.
At this point, there's no project.
And I know, it's just, it's, it's an authorization of a study. And I understand that the, the A to the connective tissue of the B is the B will then have a study with recommendations, which will need further study based on, let's say, 10 recommendations each on these. I'm, I'm curious to know what the pair concept will be and what, what the results will, will be. The multimodal aspect gives me concern as well as the impacts in these corridors. These are sensitive corridors. I think induced demand is an issue that we're seeing in parts of the region. We go expand the freeway and then all of a sudden there's just more cars there and it's kind of a never ending cycle. That being said, the issues around 45, you know, 610, the Pierce elevated, those are well needed, very, very clear mandates to go and do those. But some of these other projects, I don't feel have the same clarity on that. So I'm not going to be supporting, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't at least look at it. But I've, the last time we did this, I didn't support the 518 expansion. I was on the record on that. I'm just not going to this time. But I'll be curious to see what they say. It'll be interesting to see what the numbers are. So.
Any other questions, comments? I think at this point, it's good to get data and, and it's, it's data driven as opposed to just us wondering. So I think that's good. Same thing with the one-way pair. Just it's been a concept that's been out there. Let's actually get a study and a data rather than speculating about it. Let's get the data about it. So that's why I think it's important that we do these types of things and understand them. So last call for questions.
Mayor, just a quick question. With these studies, I assume they'll be taking traffic counts. Will they, will we get that raw data so we can put it into our models?
Yes, we'll, we'll have access to any raw data.
I mean, this is fairly cheap 10% of the, of both studies.
Nothing else to get that.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you.
And, and Trent, you and I had a conversation about this is on the, I think it's F. Yeah, overall mobility study. You know, you and I talked about, you know, we've got all these north, south corridors from, you know, Broadway to McCord and beyond. Under this study, will we be looking a little bit more in depth on whether or not we need the four lanes or, you know, a super two lane or something like that with suffice?
Sure. I think, you know, when, when we look at this and, and look at the, the model and the projections, we'll be able to look at our, our thoroughfare plan and, you know, are, are these corridors, do they need to have the four lanes ultimately? Could they do, you know, could, could some of them do with less? Just, you know, what, what is the capacity we ultimately need? So it'll, it'll take into account those things and make recommendations on our thoroughfare plan.
And that's good because we could see some changing of the CIP in the future where we've got a four lane. Really and truly, I call it a super two lane, kind of like Orange has been done, you know, could suffice. So we're not, we're not putting as much money or a bigger corridor, concrete on the ground, those types of things could be, could be in our future with some of those. We'll see where it goes, but it sounds good. Madam Secretary, I'm going to call for the vote on F first.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Member Patel.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Coza.
Aye.
Member Carbon.
Aye.
Member Camp Car.
Oh.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
All right, likewise, we'll call for the vote on item G.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Member Patel.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Coza.
Aye.
Member Carbon.
Aye.
Member Camp Car. Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
All right.
With that, I don't think I remember.
Member Cade.
Oh.
Okay. Five to two.
So with that, we'll move to item J. Ms. Cade, would you present item J, please?
Consideration and possible action resolution number R 2023-297. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, an item to award a contract to Flock Safety to implement our real-time crime center that we've shared information on in the past. The real-time crime center leverages existing systems like the Flock license plate reading cameras, other city cameras, ISD cameras, drone footage, and it consolidates those into a, a single platform that can be used to improve operational awareness of active scenes for the PD as well as, you know, clear operational pictures of past scenes potentially. So with that, we recommend award to Flock Safety in the amount of $200,000. That's $100,000 annually for the, for two years. Thank you.
All right, with that, I'll turn to Mr. Hernandez, who pulled it.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just trying, trying to get my brain around the difference between this and the item that we passed, was it last meeting, for the 77,000? What, so this is for the crime center, which I guess is an aggregate software, whereas the other one is, is what, just the, the cameras themselves? I'm-
So the, the last one was just the Flock license plate reading cameras that we have existing in place, and it's to continue with that program with the existing cameras.
So is it, they have software that, I guess, is inherent on the camera somehow that is like they're, we're paying for a subscription to the cameras that, I'm a little confused on what.
Right, so that, those cameras, you have, you know, the, this view of those. What this does is you have that, and then you're able to bring in all these other existing-
Yeah, I read, so this one gives us, yeah, we can-
Into a consolidated platform.
Other agencies will feed into it and things like that.
Right.
And then a question that, there was this terminology, I guess, that we were going to have hits, I see Derek walking, hits, but it's, so is it other agencies sharing information? Are they sharing all of that information, and we're sharing all of our information? Or is it just we're plugging certain things in, or they can say, hey, we want to see if this license plate goes anywhere, or we can just pull an aggregate of all the license plates that have been read?
Well, that's where Captain Dunham's going to come in.
Yes, sir. So the agreement that we discussed last time was just for the cameras themselves, and that is, and it pulls in all the license places and it dumps them into a database that it searches, yes. That's what the license plate readers are. This is for the real-time crime center, which utilizes those cameras as well as the other cameras throughout the community that we have partnerships with.
This, this is like the, the hub, I guess, we're paying for access to that hub, is that what you're saying?
Sure, yes, sir. It, basically, it takes all of the cameras that we have access to now, and it puts it in a live feed, that we can see it all in one, from one single source, rather than having to log into all the different databases that store those camera feeds.
So that would be if we had an, an agreement with another agency, you're saying that instead of going to that agency specifically, they could, we could access it through this real-time crime center?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Interesting, okay. All right, I'm just trying to understand the, the difference between the two.
We need a flow chart.
Yeah, yeah. But, okay, thank, thank you for the, the answers, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
All right, open up any other questions, comments?
Captain, can you tell me, how many cameras for this $100,000 are we getting?
We're looking at about 3,500 cameras that we're going to be able to connect with this, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Last call. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Proton Coza.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Kamkar.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
No.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Member Patel.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to one, six to one.
All right, with that, we will move to other business. There were none. Mayor, council issues for city council discussion, none listed, so we will move to adjournment at 6:57.